Good evening, it is 6:00 PM, June 17th, 2019. Time to call the Garden City Council Meeting to order. I'm gonna call Pastor Eric Mason up to the podium to lead us in our invocation. As you make your way forward, I just want to thank you for your hospitality that you showed Garden City and its residents when we had a public meeting over there, so I thank you for that. Your staff was wonderful, a very friendly church. Thank you so much.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, your wisdom, your knowledge, understanding and support. As we begin this meeting, help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of our community. Fill us with your grace, kind Father. Lord God, as we make decisions that might affect those we serve in the greater Garden City community. We pray a special prayer for our mayor, city council, our city manager, the chief of police, and the chief of our fire department, along with all other citizens, corporations, businesses, and leaders that make a positive impact in this our beloved community. Heavenly Father, continue to remind us that all that we do here today, and all that we accomplish, is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity and those we serve in the Garden City community. We thank you, and these and all the blessings we act and pray. In your son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. The men stand before the flag.
The flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time I ask the clerk, call roll please.
Mayor Bethune.
Here.
Mayor Protem Kicklider.
Here.
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Cody.
Here.
Councilmember Daniel.
Here.
Councilmember Ruiz.
And Councilmember Tice.
Thank you. This time we have a number of public hearings. And first one is PC 1914 rezoning request, 4912 Old Lewisville Road. Receive a public comment on a request by Robert A. Bear, property owner, to rezon 4912 Old Lewisville Road from C2 to I1. I'm gonna open up this public hearing, and Ron Alexander's gonna give us an overview of this.
Mr. Mayor, council. PC BOA case 1914. The case is to hear a property rezoning request from C2 to I1 district. The property is located on Old Lewisville Road, just off of Dean Forest Road, on the north side of Old Lewisville. The property is approximately 95% developed, and the remaining 5% is under construction. The future land use map calls for the property to be an industrial district. Staff further evaluated the request and found that the request to be in accordance with City Code 90-201E, Criteria of Enactment, Sections 1 through 6. As such, staff forwarded a recommendation of approval. As an open hearing, the case came to the planning commission and was heard at the June 11th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting. By unanimous vote, the commission forwarded a recommendation of approval onto the city council.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Ron? I'm just gonna ask you to step back, because I don't think we have anybody here, but this time, is there anybody here that would like to come forward and speak in favor of the rezoning request? Is there anyone who would want to come forward and speak opposed? Seeing no movement, I'm gonna close this public hearing. We have PC 1915 rezoning request, Dean Forest Road parcels. Receive a public comment on a request by the city of Garden City to rezon all parcels north of Old Lewisville Road to the railroad track from C2 to I1. 222 Dean Forest Road, 220 Dean Forest Road, 218 Dean Forest Road, 216 Dean Forest Road, 210 Dean Forest Road, 206 Dean Forest Road, 204 Dean Forest Road, 214 Dean Forest Road, and 212 Dean Forest Road. I'm gonna open up this public hearing this time. Ask Ron to give us an overview of that, please.
PC 1915. Earlier this year, the city was approached by a number of landowners along Dean Forest Road, inquiring as to possibilities of rezoning their properties from C2 to I1. As the request involved multiple parcels which are currently used as residences, the city drafted and sent out a letter of communication with and confirmed all property owners were indeed interested in the rezoning. All property owners confirmed their interest in writing by signing the letter. The case is to hear a rezoning request for nine parcels along the east side of Dean Forest Road, just north of Old Lewisville Road. The future land use map calls for the properties to be commercial district. Staff further evaluated the request and found, based on current trends in the area, that the request is in accordance with City Code 90-201E, Criteria of Enactment, Items 1 through 6. As such, staff forwarded a recommendation of approval. As an open hearing, the case came before the planning commission and was heard at the June 11th, 2019 PC BOA meeting. By unanimous vote, the commission forwarded a recommendation for approval onto the city council.
And this group of home is kinda almost in a no man's land, because everything around there has gone commercial or industrial. They can't sell their residence to somebody who wants to live there in residential property. And we changed it a while back to a C2, I believe.
That's correct.
And they still haven't had a lot of interest in it. And I went on the internet and looked at the price they're asking for, and the price is very reasonable. And if we decide to change it to I1, I don't know if it's gonna help them or not, but it's something we can certainly look at and try to help them out. Any other comments from council? Alright, is there anyone here who would like to come forward and speak either in favor or against? Seeing no movement, I'm gonna close this public hearing. We have PC 1916 rezoning request, 2614 Highway 80. Receive a public comment on a request by Judy Roundtree, property owner, to rezon 2614 Highway 80 from R1 to C2. I'm gonna open up this public hearing, and ask Ron to give us an overview, please.
PC 1916. The case is to hear a property rezoning request from R1 to C2. The property is currently being used and occupied, occupied and used as a residential use, addressed 2614 Highway 80. A number of the adjacent properties have recently been rezoned to a C2 district. The city's future land use map calls for the property to be a commercial district as well. Staff further evaluated the request and found it to be in accordance with the City Code 90-201, Criteria of Enactment, Items 1 through 6. As such, staff forwarded a recommendation of approval. As an open hearing, the case came before the planning commission and was heard on the June 11th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting. By unanimous vote, the planning commission forwards a recommendation of approval for that case.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Ron? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here who would like to come forward and speak in favor of the rezoning Is there anyone here who would like to come forward and speak opposed? Seeing no movement, I'm gonna close this public hearing.
I have a comment for Judy, please.
Okay, yes ma'am, I'm sorry.
Where do you think you're going, Judy? Where are you going?
Thank you, Judy. This time I entertain a motion for approval of city council minutes dated 6/3/19 and workshop synopsis dated 6/10/19.
Information to approve?
Motion made in second. Voting on the motion, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. This time we're going into our staff reports. Up first is Ron Alexander.
Planning and zoning monthly report for the month of May. Planning and zoning activities during the month, there were no cases heard at the May 14th, 2019 meeting, planning commission meeting. There were approximately 75 other planning and zoning related acts of service provided by staff during the month. The building department activities during the month, the department issued 38 permits, performed 95 inspections, performed 90 plan reviews, held 50 onsite and office meetings, provided about four hours of in-house, in-office and field training in relation to those activities. Fire marshal activities during the month, staff performed 60 onsite inspections, performed 40 plan reviews, and approximately four hours of in-house training. Flood plain management, staff performed approximately 30 related site inspections and performed approximately 20 related plan reviews. As a result of the staff services above, and in conjunction with efforts of the other affected departments, there were six new businesses opened in the city in relation to those activities during the month.
Thank you. Any questions for Ron? Thank you. Next up is Public Works. We have Cliff Davis, substitute for Benny Gooch.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council.
Evening.
I'm here to read from Mr. Gooch, the Public Works and Water Operations Monthly Report for the month of May. We had 19 residential requests, making that a total of 140 work orders for the month of May. They included 5,335 feet of ditch maintenance, the canal maintenance cabota, two miles. We've had some troubles with that, but we've got it back in operation, so we're gonna get it back running. No vacuuming as of that month. We had about $4,000 worth of street and asphalt repairs to a third party, mainly Smith, Export Lynn, Anshford and Nelson. And 1,941 miles of shoulder maintenance. All of our dirt roads were graded, and we did have some minor potholes and asphalt repaired by staff. Streets weeper's still down, but we are working on that. We had 19 knockdowns, replacements, cleaned or new signage put up, mainly in the Old Lewisville, Biscuit Hill, Kessler Heights, and Quinney area for the police department. Also, we put some signage up in the Kessler Highway 80, Pile and Rommel, the Holder intersection, and in the Roswell Hill and Griffin area. It says no street repairs, street light repairs are requested, but we did have one, and that was on 533 Griffin. We had 4.74 tons collected of total mixed dry trash, 66 tons collected, taken to Savannah Regional, no other truck loads. We didn't have any trees removed. Preparations were made for the groundbreaking ceremony, and we did have representation at our housing fair. For the fleet maintenance, the shop serviced or repaired 55 vehicles, making that an annual total thus far of 295. May's top services for Public Works, 53% was ditch maintenance, 27% grass and weeds, and 20% driveway maintenance or repairs. Main work order, grass cutting, ditch came in second place, and then we had some signage trees and trash that we picked up. Moving on to the water operations side, there were 133 service orders that were received, and 32 work orders, making a total of 165 that staff handled for the month of May. 30,300 gallons of drinking water was prepared per day. Hydrant services, water line services, seven laterals were repaired, 10 main line repairs, water valves. 152 locations, which they've been doing a ton of that with all the directional bore in that area, but they've done a great job with that. Two valve replacements, two valve installations, 82 water cut-ons, 79 reconnects, and 51 cutoffs. Meter services, four meter MXU investigations, five maintenance services, nine meter and MXU replacements, 78 city initiated rereads, one customer request, reread. Sewer, there were four work orders, one repair. On the clean-out, one repair on the gravity, two blockages in the laterals and one lateral repaired, and that was it for manholes. Clearwater Solutions estimated the MOR for water, DMR for wastewater, and all paperwork pertaining to them for the month. Treatment plant, treated and discharged, a total daily average of .9 MGD. There were no violations of the city NPE, excuse me, NDPES permit. Or on the MORs for the month, the water system withdrew a total of 30.309 MGD and used 0.448 MG from Savannah. IND Town Center Water Systems. During the month, 18,614 pounds dry solids were removed from the plant, and the in-house laboratory continued to analyze most all NPDES permit and process control tests, except the annual tests that are contracted with the EPD. And that concludes the report. Do you all have any questions?
Y'all been busy.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, in this rain, but we'll get, we'll get taken care of.
Thank you.
I know they got it back to the shop this week, and I think they're just waiting on a certain part. We have to go through a certain company to get the parts for that thing, and that can be troublesome, but I believe we're getting to the home stretch. Fingers crossed.
Thank you, Cliff.
Thank you, y'all.
Next up is our Police Department Chief Ballard.
Good evening, Mayor and council.
Good evening.
Got some of the highlights for our statistics in May. We had a total of 2,674 calls for service, bringing us to a total of 13,270 calls for the year so far. In reference to our crime offenses, our high number this past month was involving larcenies, which is the shoplifting and miscellaneous thefts of that sort. And our officers had to work 53 accidents last month. As far as traffic enforcement, we observed and wrote citations for 1,436 violations. 305 of those were warnings. We wrote 453 speeding tickets, 48 seat belts, and we had nine DUIs for the month. Some of the code enforcement highlights involved, we had 92 cases come into compliance. We conducted 379 property violation re-inspections. And we also issued 126 notice of violations for the month. And we tagged 13 vehicles for tow. None of those were done by those individuals, and we ended up having to tow four vehicles as far as derelict vehicles in the city. Moving on to municipal court, some of the highlights involved, we handled 1,200 cases for the month, bringing us to a total of 4,845 cases handled through our municipal court for the year so far. And during the month, 784 of those were handled as far as traffic citations and criminal cases that were handled. 139 of those issued probation. As far as our training for the department, we had approximately 264 hours of training. We were able to host two specific classes, which involved advanced roadside impaired enforcement, and DUI detection and standardized field sobriety. And two of our supervisors completed a professional management program course that's offered through Columbus State University. As far as items of interest, we conducted a cops at bus stops. I believe that program is very successful. We're looking forward to starting that buck up in the new school year. We also, I also attended a Stop the Violence meeting at the Garden City Gym on May the 4th. We also hosted a chat with a cop at Gould Elementary, which was after school let out that afternoon. We also worked with our sponsor in coordination with McDonald's. We had cookies with a cop on Highway 21 before school let out. And our department participated in Police Memorial Day, as well as the Savannah Mile Run involving the 200 Club. And those are the highlights for the month. Any questions?
Any questions for Chief Ballard?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is our Fire Department Chief Maderos.
Good evening, Mayor and council.
Good evening.
Here's the Fire Department report for May. We ran a total of 301 calls for the month. That brings our total to 1,087. The number one call that we had is the first responder, and the second one would be pre-fire plan inspections. Department training, we had 243 hours, which averaged about 18 hours per firefighter. This month, or in May, I completed the arson level one course, which is an 80-hour course. Sergeant Tease completed the Georgia Life Fire Safety Educator Course. Chief Lewis attended the Georgia Fire Inspector's Association Training up in Macon to get continuing education hours. We continue to do the Stop the Bleed Program for Garden City personnel and Georgia ports. We also met with local departments in May. Chief Lewis does attend the Chatham County Emergency Medical Meeting every month, and he also conducted testing for Poole and Rankin Fire Departments. In the community, we've continued our senior, sent our blood pressure checks. Looking forward, we continue to do Stop the Bleed Program and ARCAN Training for various organizations, and we should be wrapping up the Fire Department Fitness Program, Biggest Loser at the end of the month. And that's it for the report of May. Any questions?
Any questions for Chief Maderos? Thank you. Before we get into the city manager's report, I need to back up. I have a 7 o'clock meeting to go to after this meeting, and in my haste to do that, I overlooked our public comment time, where we allow any residents to come forward and speak for three minutes. So at this time, I'm gonna open that up. If there's anyone who would like to come forward and speak for three minutes, if you'd state your name and address for the record, please. And I just saw your text.
Good evening.
State your...
My name is Nadeline Morris. I reside at 209 Facility Thomas Way. I was going home after a long day at the office, and of course, the train. The mayor's been gracious enough to take my texts and letting him know when the train's there and all that good stuff, and he's calling CSX and all that good stuff, and I really appreciate that. The train has been stopped on the track since 5:08 PM. It is now 6:23. I'm gonna have my glasses on. And the train's still there. I've got my husband watching for me. I was at the track just that long since I started texting, and I said, "I'm gonna go to the meeting," because I know that's where you all are, just to let you know how it looks like this is starting back up again. And we really need to, I guess, put some more pressure on them. And one of the things I do wanna point out about the train, when it stops on Facility Thomas Way track, it has cleared the crossing down at Big Hill Road track. So it's not like everybody's being impacted, it's just us nice people on Facility Thomas Way. And I know the majority of the residents reside on Big Hill Road side with the subdivision back there, and you got the baseball field back there, and I know it's baseball season and all that good stuff. So again, if we can get some attention with the train on Facility Thomas Way, we really would appreciate it. If someone was to get ill, and I know one of my neighbors has a son that has special needs, and we have another neighbor further down the road that has medical needs that they are really on oxygen almost 20 hours out of the 24-hour day. So these are the type of medical illnesses that really requires, you never know when they have an episode, God forbid, and they need emergency assistance. Just bottom line. So again, the train's still there.
Okay.
He hasn't texted me back.
Thank you. Ron, are you handling that?
I'm texting our CSX contact right now.
Do what, Ron?
I'm texting our CSX contact right now.
Okay, okay. We'll let him know the circumstances. Any council member have a comment on that?
I was just trying to figure out if it was CSX or more.
Yeah. Which, they've been pretty responsive about clearing it when I call, so I don't know if they have a equipment malfunction or what, but city manager is contacting them, and maybe he'll give us a report at the end of the meeting. Anybody else wanna come forward and speak for three minutes? Seeing no movement, we're going into our city managers' updates and announcements. Ron?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we are working on the multi-purpose field project over on Highway 80, doing some community engagement, and Jackie Jackson is gonna come up and give a brief report on our initial community meeting we had a couple of weeks ago.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you hear me now? Okay. As Ron mentioned, I'm just gonna give a quick general update, the public meeting that we had the other night about the Highway 80 multi-purpose fields project. And real quickly, again, I really wanted to thank, again, Jesus First Community Church for their assistance that night. They were extremely helpful in welcoming into their home, providing food and snacks for everybody, so we can't thank you enough for that. I really appreciate that. It made it much easier for us to set everything up that night. As an update, Garden City and all the cities within Chatham County themselves have been working together for the past few years to determine what types of recreation might be needed for the community. In fact, just recently, the Chatham County put out its multi-purpose recreation master plan for all of Chatham County, unincorporated Chatham County, that is. All of the municipalities have been working together, again, building on that to look at the list of SPOS projects, which are special purpose local ops, meaning sales tax projects. And that is based on, as you're familiar with, a 1% sales tax. And those lists of projects are put into play for the, all of the county residents to vote on, for mostly capital projects, recreation projects, drainage projects, et cetera. As a note, actually, the Chamber of Commerce estimated that roughly 38% of the sales tax within Chatham County is paid by outside entities, which are those visitors and tourism dollars that come into Chatham County, which really benefits Garden City as a whole, because we're able to use those same dollars to fund some of our larger projects such as recreation. Garden City also completed a survey within about the past year and a half, where we put out questions to the local residents as to what they would like to see in the community. And overwhelmingly, recreation and parks was a big request to build on what we have here in Garden City and to improve some of our facilities that we have locally. And we wanna also do that for the community, we wanna do that not just for the children, but also for the adults and the senior population and those type of, to benefit those who are using those particular facilities. So the intent of the meeting on June 4th was specifically to meet with the residents of Sharon Park and the Woodlawn neighborhoods, and we mailed out a letter to all of the residents and the commercial entities along that thoroughfare. To, basically, before anything was designed, we wanted to put the request out to those neighborhoods to let us know what you do and don't want in your community. We don't have any designs as of, as of right now, nothing's been put into place. And at this particular meeting, we brought CHA Consulting and Symbiocity, who are consulting with the city to help us with this public outreach and design process, should it go forward. And during that meeting, we basically had a question and answer session for all those that attended. Patrick Graham with CHA Consulting did an overview and showed images of similar projects, mainly focusing on lighting, bleachers, fencing, that type of thing. And it was just visuals, pictures and whatnot to get feedback from those attendees to see what, again, they did and didn't like with some of those pictures. Also, during that process, we offered a system of basically writing down all of your questions or any comments on note cards, so that we could then repeat all of that for everyone in attendance, so we would all be hearing the same thing. We've since then summarized all those questions and listed them out, everyone, and you all have copies given to you, so that you can also, if you... you all have copies given to you so that you can also, if you were not in attendance, read those individual questions and responses that were given that night as well. So as we move forward, um, we're taking all that information, all the information that was presented and, um, and we're taking that back and we're gathering all of that. And we're working on three possible designs uh that we will be presenting at public meetings on Thursday, June twenty-seventh and Thursday, July eleventh. And these meetings will both take place at the Garden City Gym from six-thirty to seven-thirty. So this particular format will be a drop-in format. What they're gonna do is have sketches, those three uh draft designs for everyone to look at, and you'll offer comments basically at those open forum meetings. Um, we're gonna have the same exact information at both meetings, so if you can't make it to one, you can definitely make it to the other one, you will see the same exact thing. And then from there, we will also be having a public comment period open up where we'll have that, um, the opportunity to go online and look at these same designs. We'll have a Survey Monkey there so you can give comments that way and that's a type of, um, online system where you can provide comments, it's pretty easy. Um, and then we'll have everything on, of course, the city's website, Facebook, Twitter, and we'll also be posting the meeting announcements on the fire department sign and the recreation sign on Highway twenty-one. Um, and then lastly, we will have the information also going out on all the water bills for all the residents and commercial businesses in the city as well. I think that was the main jux of everything. Um, and I guess at this point, if you have any questions, just let me know, otherwise I would ask that you help us gather as much, as many residents as possible to come out to the meetings, provide comments and kinda go from there.
Now, you and I've had several conversations because the residents brought up a number of concerns and questions. And you and I have had several conversations and you've communicated with the designer those concerns.
Correct.
And hopefully, um, where we can, correct an issue that will reflect on the plan.
Absolutely. So the, the main, um, issues and comments that we heard that night, of course, they were there, so they know what was presented. But since then, as you mentioned, we've, um, had some ideas, if you will, kind of coming back and forth and I presented those to the design group and he will be designing those and, and presenting them to the group as well to see if that, um, hopefully addressed most of the concerns that were presented that, that night.
Council have any questions?
I would like to, uh, let everybody understand that this is not a done deal.
Correct.
We have not made the decision to do anything over there. This is to find out what anyone wants, what their concerns are, if they want it there.
Right, absolutely, absolutely. Which is really the reason why we don't, we don't have any designs yet, um, because we, we are not certain that that's indeed what's gonna go there. We didn't know, we wanted to hear from the community first. Um, we, again, brought on consultants to help us kind of facilitate that process, um, because there are so many public meetings involved and that type of thing, but absolutely nothing is on the books whatsoever at this stage, not at all.
Any others?
I talked to a few people, and I was just, I know it's not a done deal, because I was wondering, from every area, except maybe this Goulet area and this, this Washington area, those are only two areas that won't have a problem getting there, but you're from all the other council districts, how's it gonna be?
I will, right, right. And I will say, this is, um, something that's being addressed as just one piece of the, the bigger pie, if you will, understanding that these parcels have been vacant for almost seventeen years, I believe. Um, and the city owns them and it, it just seems like a, a perfect opportunity, it's very, um, accessible, that type of thing for the community. But I would definitely say that this isn't the end of the story by any means. There's other opportunities out there and we're just working towards that end goal of providing recreation, whether it's passive or active for the community. This is just a really good, it seemingly, location for the community, but absolutely, this is not the, the last, you know, step by any means.
I guess either way it goes, it'll be a toss-up because people in other communities, they'll have to commute over that side also, either way it goes.
Could be, but we also don't know what we're gonna put in other parts of the communities as well, so that, that will come. Um, a part of this, and as we've discussed through our planning cycle over the past year, is to really figure out, now that we have the county's document, which we just got, like I said, this past week, um, we can build on that and really do a better assessment of what Garden City truly needs. Um, and that's where we also would like assistance from these folks. Uh, we just know that we have this property and, and there's a, a good use and a big need, but it could be there's other properties in other areas of the communities that are better suited for, you know, other type of alternatives, whether it's passive or recreational, I mean passive or, um, active. Um, such as even out front in town center in the town green, you know? Ultimately, we would like walking trails and a memorial, a veterans memorial and those type of things, it's just a different use in a different part of the city. Um, but we haven't gotten to that stage where we've really formalized all of that yet, but that's definitely in our next steps for sure.
Thank you, Jackie. I'd like to thank those in the audience for coming out tonight and would ask y'all to come to those, one of those meetings and see what the plan and give us more feedback about the plan, because that's who we need to hear from is the ones over in that area. So, thank y'all for coming out. We got a number of items for consideration. First one is a ordinance, G dot speed ordinance. I'm gonna ask the clerk to read that by heading only.
An ordinance to amend Dakota ordinances of Garden City as amended to amend section seventy-eight dash three and articles one and two of Appendix B, which is incorporated therein by reference to ratify and redesignate the speed limits for streets or portions of streets within the city.
Entertained a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
At this time, I'll ask the city manager to give us an update, please.
The train's moving.
That's, that's a positive, but what?
That's what Officer Robidier was just telling.
And, and we'll talk towards the end of the, the meeting what you found out.
Okay, yeah, just wanna let y'all know the train is moving. Uh, DOT speed ordinance were changing, actually DOT is changing the speed limit on Highway twenty-one in the Grove School Zone. And as a result of the speed limit change, we gotta modify, um, our permit with them and make sure that we can enforce the new speed limit, that's the reason we are undertaking this action.
Okay. Council have any questions? We have a motion second, voting on a motion, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes on the first reading. This time, I'd entertain a motion to suspend rules, council, for a second reading.
Does that move?
Moved and seconded, voting on a motion, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. This time, I'll ask the clerk to read it for a second reading by heading only, please.
An ordinance to amend Dakota ordinances for Garden City, Georgia has amended to amend section seventy-eight dash three and articles one and two of Appendix B, which is incorporated therein by reference to ratify and redesignate the speed limits for streets or portions of streets within the city.
Entertained a motion? Motion made, seconded, voting on a motion, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Mo, motion carries on the second reading. We have a resolution, CSX facility encroachment agreement, ask clerk to read it by heading only.
A resolution by the mayor and council to authorize the city manager to enter into a facility encroachment agreement between the city and CSX transportation for the pipeline running along Nelson Avenue and the crossing Bishop Avenue and the CSX right-of-way crossing for the conveyance of raw treated sewage.
Entertained a motion? Ron, you have a overview of that, please?
Yeah, we, uh, are gonna be working on a Garden City sewer line, the intersection of Nelson Avenue and Bishop. And as a result of our sewer location and its proximity to the, uh, existing CSX rail, we've gotta get a permit to work nearby the rail, so this agreement, uh, will help us get that project underway.
We have a motion second, voting on a motion, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution, police vehicles.
A resolution by the mayor and council to accept the proposal of Butler Dodge to sell to the city four Dodge Chargers for the amount of ninety-one thousand and eighty-nine dollars and to authorize the city manager to sign the purchase contract or purchase order for the vehicles.
Entertained a motion? Motion made in second, and, uh, this is something we have in our budget, police department needs it.
Yes, budget item, um, to be, uh, purchased in twenty-nineteen. Taking the action now will allow us to get pricing on two thousand and nineteen vehicles rather than potentially increased price on twenty-twenty's that'll come out later this year.
Any comments from council? We have a motion second, voting on a motion, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution, police mobile radar trailer, ask clerk to read it by heading only.
A resolution by the mayor and council to accept the price quoted by M S Martin Enterprises Inc. to sell to the city one Decatur on site three hundred M X mobile radar trailer for the amount of eight thousand four hundred and ninety dollars and to authorize the city manager to sign the purchase contract or purchase order for the radar trailer.
Entertained a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
And Ron, this is, uh, I guess going down the road, you sometimes don't realize how fast you're driving and this is gonna flash and let you know you're driving too fast, correct?
Yeah, I be mobile so we can, uh, deploy it all over the city where, uh, we're trying to get information or a message out to slow down the folks.
Any comments from council? We have a motion second, voting on a motion, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution, police portable radios, ask clerk to read it by heading only.
A resolution by the mayor and council to accept proposals of Anna Communications to sell to the city forty-one replacement portable radios and accessories for the price of two hundred and twenty-three thousand five hundred and forty dollars and forty-seven cent and to authorize the city manager to sign the purchase contract or purchase order for the radios.
Entertained a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
And Ron, these have just outlived their life.
Yeah, budget item again this year in twenty-nineteen fiscal year, uh, radios have reached their life expectancy of ten-plus years. Uh, Chief Ballard was able to get, um, an arrangement put in place to trade in the old ones, uh, purchase new ones, so we can stay, uh, current on all of our communications capabilities, uh, with our police department.
Thank you. Questions from council? We have a motion second, voting on a motion, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution, Red Speed Services Agreement, I'd ask clerk to read it by heading only.
A resolution authorizing the city to enter into a contract with Red Speed Georgia LLC for the implementation and operation of an automated traffic encroachment safety device program with respect to speeding violations within certain school zones in the city in accordance with chapter seventy-eight, article two of the city code, authorizing the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city and for other purposes.
Entertained a motion? Ron, will you give us a overview, please?
Yeah, after many months of, uh, research, um, and, uh, consultation with the city attorney, um, Chief Ballard has brought this agreement forth and, uh, this is the first step we have to take, uh, towards putting, uh, speed detection devices in school zones, uh, initially Highway twenty-one Groves, Highway seventeen Gould, um, to, uh, go ahead and enforce the new speed limit on Highway twenty-one and the existing speed limit on Highway seventeen, uh, in these school zones in an effort to get folks to, uh, slow down and, uh, make those areas more pedestrian friendly.
Questions from council? We have a motion second, voting on a motion, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution, payroll processing proposal, I'd ask clerk to read it by heading only.
A resolution authorizing the city of Garden City to negotiate a service agreement with ADP LLC for payroll processing and a service agreement for App Colony Inc. for the furnishing of a software program to be used for employee scheduling, time tracking, attendance and communications and for other purposes.
Entertained a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Ron, if you could give us an overview of that, please?
Yeah, Garden City's been doing payroll for our hundred and six, hundred and ten employees in-house for many years. And, uh, what we've decided is that we can more cost-effectively, uh, implement this, uh, through a third-party source. It'll also provide some technology enhancements, um, to the staff where they can, uh, monitor their, their payroll information through an app on their phone. Um, we also are gonna be using App Colony to, uh, enhance our employee scheduling, time tracking, uh, in conjunction with the payroll system. And, uh, this provider is also gonna help us stay current on the ever-changing payroll and labor laws that we have to, uh, stay on top of as we file reports and do other things through the payroll process that occurs every two weeks.
Thank you. Questions from council? We have a motion second, voting on a motion, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution, city council summer schedule, I'd ask clerk to read it by heading only.
A resolution to amend the regular meeting schedule of the Garden City Council for the period of July first, two thousand and nineteen through September thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen.
Entertained a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
And Ron, two of these, uh, meetings fall on a holiday and typically during the summer we have a light schedule.
Yeah, we do this, uh, every summer I've been here where we, um, go ahead and cancel the first meeting in the month. Oftentimes it coincides with, um, the holiday schedules anyway, so we'll only have the second, uh, meeting of the month, uh, in the next three months, July, August and September, and get the business done of the city, uh, in that single meeting for the month.
Thank you. We have a motion second, voting on a motion, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. This time, Ron, I'd like for you to give us an update on what you found from the railroad. And before you say that, I wish they would be a little proactive in the fact that they know that crossing is blocked and they have a contact number where that would be me or, or whoever the police chief designates. So instead of waiting on a resident to call about it being blocked, we would know about it, we could prepare in the event there was an emergency on that side of the tracks and they could also let us know how long it was gonna be blocked, because we don't need to wait until we have residents calling us because they're late for appointments, they can't get out and they can't get in. So I'd ask you, let us know what you found out.
Well, we, we did contact, uh, CSX, I believe he's the yard master and, um, he said there was a mechanical problem with the train. Um, so, as you said, that would've been good if we would've heard that there was a, a mechanical problem, but the train is actually moved and gone now. Ma'am? Yeah. Um, so that's, that's the update as of right now, it's unfortunate that it took that long to get that engine back operationally moved.
Well, it is unfortunate and, um, you know, I think I would like to know a little bit more about that when they say they have a mechanical problem. What, what does that mean? Are they not doing enough preventive maintenance on their equipment? Because we've been having this happen a number of times recently and when it's been a extended period of time, it's always mechanical problem. So I would like for us to follow up on that. Is there any other business that needs to come forward tonight? Entertained a motion for adjournment? We are adjourned.